Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call in to open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for March 21st, 2019, beginning at 7:08 PM. Thank you for putting up with our tardiness, not getting out here right at 7:00 PM. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. As is our custom, we will start our opening meeting with our meeting with our opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Walton in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated, and if you would also please silence cellphones and any electronic devices at this time to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would also please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. So the first item on our agenda this evening is program and presentation. And the item is a student performance by the Arlington High School Theater.
That's right. We're really excited about it. So thank you, Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Tonight, we're going to present a wonderful representation of our outstanding theater programs at Arlington ISD. Recently, each of the high schools participated in a district-wide one-act play competition, and we are proud that for the second year, AISD captured all three advancing slots in the 6A competition. Yes, you can clap for that. That's awesome. Absolutely. Great job. Arlington Lamar and Martin Highs will now compete in the bi-district competition. That'll take place next week out in Abilene. And tonight, we welcome the Arlington High School Colt Theater under the direction of Micah Green. They'd like to give you a sneak peek at their district champion play, Eurydice.
Good evening. So if you can sit here if you want. We have about a five-minute scene. They're going to be performing this way. So if you want to move out here, you're more than welcome to, and if you don't want to, it's okay. Welcome, everyone. Hi, thank you for being here. So this is the opening scene of our UIL one-act competition piece called Eurydice by Sarah Rule. We recently took first place. We were named district champions, and I'm very proud of the kids for that. And this is a Greek mythology of the story of Eurydice and how Orpheus loved her so much that he went down to the underworld to go save Eurydice and bring her back. I'd love to go and do me, thank you.
We know what you say, so.
So this is a 2003 play that Sarah Rule, she took the idea of Eurydice and she updated it so that it looks and sounds way more modern. This is the opening scene of the show, and here they are. Let them take it away. Imagine, if you will, the lights are dark, and then you hear the sound of waves as if you're on a beach, and then the lights come up.
For me? Thank you. And the sea? Wow. And the stars, too? That's very generous. Perhaps too generous? Thank you. What are you thinking about?
Music.
How can you think about music? You either hear it or you don't.
I'm hearing it, then.
I wrote a book today.
Did you?
It was very interesting.
That's good.
Don't you want to know what it was about?
Of course.
There were these stories about people's lives, how some come out well and others come out badly.
Did you love the book?
Yes. I think so.
Why?
Well, it can be interesting to see other people, like deaf people who read books, agree or disagree with what you think.
Why?
Because it makes you a larger part of the human community. It had very interesting arguments.
Oh, so arguments that are interesting are good arguments?
Well, yes.
Maybe you should think up your own thoughts instead of reading them in some book.
I do. I do think of my own thoughts.
I, uh, I wrote a song for you today.
You did?
Yep. It's not interesting or not interesting, it just is.
Will you play it for me?
It has too many parts. Oh, but! Remember this melody? Do you have it?
Well, I think so.
All right, well, let's hear it.
Okay. Is that right?
We'll work on it. Will you remember my melody?
Yes. I will always remember your melody. It'll be imprinted on my heart like wax.
My music will fly you up into the sky.
Won't I fall down when the music ends?
The clouds will be so moved that they'll fill up with water until they become heavy, and you'll sit on one and fall gently down to the earth. How about that?
Okay.
I love you.
I love you, too.
How will you remember?
That I love you? Oh, that's easy. I can't help it.
Well, you never know. I should tie a string around your finger to help remind you. This hand. There. Now you'll remember.
That's a very particular finger.
Yes.
You're aware of that?
Yes.
How aware?
Very aware.
Orpheus. Are we?
You tell me.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes!
May our lives be full of music! Do you still have my melody?
Oh, it's right here.
Good.
What are you thinking about?
Music? Just kidding. I was thinking about you. And music.
So this is Samantha Garcia. She's a junior, and this is Cole Johnson. He is a senior. They both won acting awards at our last competition, and they'll be performing again next week at Abilene. So we thank you so much for letting us come over.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, students. Appreciate that bit of entertainment to lead us into our meeting this evening. Really appreciate the setting the tone, the beach, the waves. We all just came off of spring break, and maybe most of us didn't get to do that, but we wanted to. Great stuff. Congratulations on your accomplishments and good luck going forward. Thank you. Wonderful. Good things going on in Arlington ISD. On that note, the next item on our agenda is the Student of the Month. So this month, we have Sam Houston representing. And if we may, Principal Benavides, would you please come on down and tell us who you have?
Good evening, Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to present our Student of the Month. The Student of the Month from Sam Houston High School is Afuchi Yeloo Akpom. We call her Afuchi, so I'm going to call her Afuchi for the rest of the time. But Afuchi is an exceptional student at Sam Houston High School, who is a role model as well as a leader among her peers. Over the last four years, she has shown her commitment to scholarship and service to others in the community. Afuchi is the senior class president, a Richard Greene scholar, captain of the Sam Houston High School basketball team, a volleyball player, and a member of Student Council, Avid, and Key Club. On top of that, she is academically excellent. She is ranked number nine in her class. She likes to spend time volunteering at places like Mission Arlington, Episcopal Youth Committee, and Methodist Dallas Hospital. An exemplary student mentor, student leader, and citizen, Afuchi is a terrific example of a student with Sam pride, who has taken full advantage of all opportunities presented to her. So I present to you Afuchi Akpom.
Welcome. How are you, Afuchi?
I'm doing good. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Congratulations on this. Do you have some words, anything you'd like to say?
Um, I'd just like to say thank you to my dad and, of course, my mom for instilling discipline and giving me the tenacity to go after things that I want. I want to say thank you to Mr. B for making Sam Houston a welcoming environment and providing me with many opportunities.
That's wonderful. Well, we are certainly proud to hear all of the things that you are excelling in. You're a stellar example of what it is to be in Arlington, a great Arlington ISD student. You're a great representative with all of the things that you're doing and that you've accomplished. And I guess one of the questions that I have is when you leave our district, what would you like to do most?
I guess I'd likely, I want Sam Houston specifically, to be a place where the freshmen will feel involved, as the seniors are. So I want our classes to be able to come together and not feel like one is less than the other, and that we're all just the same, just one school of Texans.
Ah, very nice. Very nice. Well, I, uh, I'm excited. You have a very bright future. You've already accomplished so much, and just think that that is the stepping stone, the foundation upon the rest of your journey and paths and chapters that lie ahead of you. So to Dad, congratulations. You've got to be very proud. If you would indulge myself and Dr. Cavassos, we'd like to come down, and we have something for you.
Thank you.
So one of the things, if you want to come on over this way, we have a pin. I have a pin for you. If you see, I'm wearing this. Most of the trustees, most are wearing it. Our superintendent is wearing it. This pin is a very special pin. It is something that we wear that we don't give out very lightly, only to those that, in your situation, are making a great example of what makes us proud to be trustees, to do things for you, for our student body population, for our district and our community. So I would like to give you this pin. Please feel free to do what you'd like to with it, wear it proudly, put it in a shadow box, post it every day on social media, whatever you'd like to do. But thank you very much for being an excellent example of an Arlington ISD student. Dr. Cavassos?
We also have, this is kind of momental for you, and to thank you again for being an exceptional student and representing not only Sam Houston, your family, but all our students exceptionally well. So we're very proud of you and know you're going to do exceptionally well in your future. So thank you again.
Take some photos? All right, well, we'll look at Dad. Did you get one, or do you want another one where we're looking at you?
Okay, okay. I gotta be here all day. Thank you, guys.
Sure.
Okay, there's only one.
Can we give him one?
Everybody, I ain't got mine yet, so. All right, we got one, two, one more. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Fernando, you want it? Yeah.
I just tripped on YouTube, in case y'all missed that.
All right. Great things, great things going on in our district. Amazing, amazing opportunities, amazing students. And now we come to honoring our amazing community. Tonight, the next item on our agenda is the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Ms. Anita?
Thank you so much, Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm going to go off script just a little bit because I took a meeting today for the first time with the folks at the AISD Education Foundation, and I just left that conversation so incredibly motivated by the stories that they shared about how they help our teachers get supplies for their classrooms, put a lot of effort behind grants for the STEM academies, all of these different really fantastic opportunities that I really didn't even know we had yet. So I just wanted to take a moment and just share that personal story from today because when I look at what they've done over the course of time, it really magnifies the impact that they have for all of us across the district. So the foundation has been around since 1994. They provide direct support to us by funding teacher-imagined grant requests and accelerate the mission of the ISD. Major funding in recent years is focused on our pre-kindergarten program and on career development. The mission of their foundation, of the Education Foundation, is to serve the students, teachers, and staff by fulfilling extraordinary educational needs and initiatives. This is accomplished by a board-led fund development mission. It features three signature special events, as well as their collaboration with parents and teachers and the community at large. Since its inception, the Arlington ISD Education Foundation has provided nearly $2.2 million in support to our school district, and I just find that incredible. And what they didn't tell you, but I want to make sure we share tonight, too, is one of those three big fundraisers is coming up. It's April 12th. It is Education Celebration. It will be at Six Flags Over Texas, and the beauty of it is, anyone can go. So the support of a $25 ticket will be provided to the Arlington Independent School District as part of that fundraiser, and of that $25 admission, anyone that attends can contribute $5 to the school of their choice. So it's a great night, April 12th, $25, Six Flags Over Texas, 6:00 to 11:00 PM. And with that, I want to say a huge thank you on behalf of all of us to the foundation, and I believe that Amanda Solins is here tonight to receive some recognition. And we do have something for you. Come on up.
Come on up, Amanda.
Don't really know what we do from here.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to say a few words?
And thank you for the Education Celebration plug. Appreciate that.
And feel free to repeat at the end of whatever you have to say and whoever you'd like to say.
Good evening, Dr. Cavassos and members of the board. Over the years, I've had the privilege to be in here for many occasions happening in this room, but tonight is truly special. The Education Foundation is honored to be the recipient of this award. To say it is an honor to work with you is an understatement, for the foundation's only work, only mission, and only passion is to work together with you to stand in the gap in fund projects benefiting students, and not just any students, Arlington ISD students. We see the remarkable work you do knocking down barriers and building opportunity. It is not an easy job, and I am certain of your dedication, talent, and very long, late hours. Thank you for leading AISD, and thank you even more for recognizing the diligent work of the Arlington ISD Education Foundation. May we continue to build on the work we have completed together, so the road ahead has even more opportunities for partnerships. Thank you all so much again. And I'll do my other plug for Education Celebration. If you have any questions, go to aisdeucationcelebration.com. Thanks, everybody.
There's another way that they can earn money, too, isn't it?
Another way they can earn money? Oh, for Urban Alchemy? Also, you can head over to Urban Alchemy, and if you show, there's a graphic on Tony Ruttigliano's Facebook. If you show that graphic, you get a dollar off your coffee, and a dollar also goes to the Education Foundation. And I think right now, we're at, we have five matching grants, and I think we're up to where we could raise $2,000.
Yes. I've passed it.
Over $2,000? Yeah, so just head over to Urban Alchemy and join the cause. Thank you, everybody.
And even says "hips for president" on the bottom.
It does say "hips for president."
President of what, we don't know.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Reich.
Yeah, we're really trying to keep that out of the public record, but, oh, well, it's out now.
It's on the receipt?
The Wi-Fi password is hashtag hips for president.
Oh, my gosh. That's amazing.
With that levity, I will say on a serious note, thank you to everybody. Amanda is Executive Director, and Elizabeth Chad for being here as leadership for the Education Foundation Board, and who you all represent. It is phenomenal, the partnership and the opportunities that have been afforded children and teachers across this entire district because of your efforts, your relentless efforts in fundraising and making sure that there's dollars available to award those grants. It is a game changer. It is changing lives. And to note, the incredible investment that has been made since 1994 and really just snowballing in the past five or so years, it's just phenomenal. We are all in this together. As a board, we govern. Dr. Cavassos and his staff throughout the district lead, but we can't do it alone. And that's in human resources and dollars and love and care and compassion, and you check all those boxes. Thank you very much for everything that you guys do and continue to do, and it is, it's wonderful to hear the accomplishments. It's wonderful to see the postings on Facebook. It's a moving experience, I think, not just for us looking at it, not just for the students and the teachers that are the beneficiaries directly. I think it's a life-changing experience for all of you as well that participate in that activity. And not to put words in your mouth, but I've seen it, I've heard it, I've felt it from just about every one of you on the board there, and thank you very much. Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down and present a plaque for you.
Don't you smile at you? Eyes closed, yeah.
This way, it's actually heard over the internet, so everything that John was saying nobody could hear, which maybe is okay. I don't know. Just kidding. So the two members as representatives, we have an immediate past past president, I guess, right? And Chad Bates, and the current president, Elizabeth Calvo. And if either of you would like to say anything, that would be more than welcomed as well.
I just want to say that we are really appreciative of all the work that you guys do, the trustees do, to also participate in all of our events. It means so much to have you guys supporting us. As John said, four years ago, we were here saying that we raised over a million dollars. We're here, we're raising over twice as much, and it's all because of you guys and what y'all do each and every day. Thank you all. Thank you, Chad, for everything you've done to get us to where we are, because we wouldn't be here without you. So again, thank you. And Amanda, you've done a great job. So proud of you.
Thank you.
And before I present this plaque, I will also have to acknowledge that there's somebody very special to all of us watching this live stream of her little girl. So we love you, Jamie. We love your daughter. She's doing a fantastic job. So just put that shout out to Ms. Solins and Austin. So I would like to officially present this award, Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, presented to the Arlington ISD Education Foundation for your service to the Arlington ISD, March 21st, 2019. There's not enough words that can fit on this plaque that truly express our appreciation. Here you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proud of you. And I guess now it's photo time, yes? That is, yeah, two plugs. That was wonderful. And, yeah, the board relations, hips for president, I will have to say that, John, you are a short timer, which can be dangerous here on this board, but honestly, with your care and commitment, I mean, that was something that completely happened organically, but anything that you try to initiate, it's just part of the goodwill and the outreach and others in the community recognizing and appreciating that. And here is an extra, at least $2,000, coming in to the Education Foundation as a result, and probably more. So it's wonderful. Thank you. All right. Let's move on. We have no administrative appointments this evening. We have no public hearing. And open forum for agenda items, the cards that I have are non-agenda items, so we will hear those at the end of the meeting, which is short, so we're not going to keep you a long time. So we will move on to consent. Are there any items that trustees wish to consider separately on the consent agenda? Are there any items that trustees wish to consider separately on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Powell, would you like to?
Good evening, President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos. On the agenda this evening, we have for your considerations donations that total $124,181. And that brings our year-to-date total to $880,272. And there are also eight bids on the agenda this evening for your consideration. And in each case, the administration is recommending the low bid and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Very good. Entertain a motion to accept consent. Let's see, Ms. Walton, your lights up?
Thank you, President Rice. Yes, I've moved that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fowler, motion by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Consent passes unanimously. Very good. We will move on then to the discussion item on our agenda this evening, which is the legislative update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. And this evening, we'd like to continue our ongoing legislative update, as there's a lot of activity that now is happening in the state legislature. And so we've had an opportunity to be down there, some board members as well. And so Ms. Powell will give us an update on some of the bills that are emerging and some of our advocacy. So Ms. Powell.
Thank you. And again, President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We are now just over halfway through the session. Seventy-three days of the session are complete, and there are 67 days to go. And suffice to say that in the last two weeks, the pace has picked up dramatically in terms of the work, as our Governance Committee members know. This chart simply shows that over the past several sessions, the total number of bills filed, and as you can see, the bills filed for this session exceed all of the previous sessions, all the way back to 2009. That was the last time that more than the 7,100 bills filed in this session were actually filed. March 8th was the filing deadline. And so we have now passed the point at which new bills could be filed for consideration. So we are all familiar with our legislative agenda. We have three overarching objectives, including local authority and instructional programs that are relevant and further the provisions of House Bill 5 that was passed in the 83rd session, and then funding and relief from unfunded mandates. So our legislative agenda falls across these five broad areas. And we have been quite active in the last couple of weeks, several people have, in working different pieces of legislation. Most recently, yesterday even, Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Barlow testified before the Higher Ed Committee, the House Higher Ed Committee, on House Bill 311 filed by Chris Turner. And that is a bill to increase the transparency of the accountability data, and in particular, the data that's used to determine CCMR ratings for districts, for college, career, and military readiness. And this is something that we have had rather unfortunate experience with in terms of our own accountability rating. And we have learned that there were a number of students not counted towards credit for us in the CCMR particular element. And so we have been working with TEA on this and had worked with several of our legislators on this matter. And so Chris Turner has actually filed two bills on this topic, and Matt Kraus has filed a bill. And so yesterday, one, the bills filed by Chris Turner, was heard in committee, and Dr. Cavassos and Dr. Barlow spoke before that committee and offered testimony. In terms of the category of school safety and mental health, there has been a bill passed of significance, Senate Bill 500, which is the supplemental appropriations bill for this current biennium, has passed out of the Senate, and it's actually already made its way out of the House Appropriations Committee and is waiting for consideration by the full House. And we expect that to occur on March 27th. But in that bill, there is $100 million for school security for TEA to administer. I will tell you that just right before this meeting, I looked online to see if the House Public Ed Committee had posted their agenda yet for next Tuesday, and they have, just late this afternoon. And that agenda will be based almost entirely on security and safety topics. And so there are 34 bills on that agenda. And so we've already started reading, Mr. Hill and I have. So that, we will hear a lot about security next week from House Public Ed. In terms of budget bills, you know, the House and the Senate each file a budget bill each year, and it works its way through the process, and usually takes a conference committee to completely hash out all the different variations. Both the, in terms of the House version HB1, that bill includes $9 billion of new funding for public education. And those funds would cover the additional funding that is actually delivered through House Bill 3. House Bill 3 has the legislation on how formulas will change and how those, that $9 billion pot of money will be allocated. That particular bill has passed out of the House Appropriations Committee and is waiting for action on a House calendar set for March 27th. On the Senate side, Senate Bill 1 includes $6 billion of funding, new funding for public ed, and that particular bill is still pending in the Senate Finance Committee. The big topic really this past couple of weeks has been the school finance bill filed by Representative Huberty. So House Bill 3 is that bill. That bill was filed the day after our last meeting. So it was filed on March 5th. And Representative Huberty is the Chair of House Public Ed. He immediately scheduled this bill for hearing last Tuesday. So Tuesday during spring break, the bill was heard in committee. The hearing lasted 11 and a half hours, and there were almost 100 speakers on the bill. And the vast majority of people who testified were supportive of the bill. There were several elements in particular that seemed to be things that certain groups had some concern about. But overall, the bill has been received very favorably by all different facets, whether it's the public school organizations or schools themselves and individuals. This bill was then heard again this Tuesday, and a committee substitute was filed and made a number of changes to the bill. And it was actually voted out of committee unanimously, and it will be scheduled for hearing by the full House within the next couple of weeks. So several of the things that this bill does, it dramatically increases the basic allotment, which is the core element of all the funding formulas. And so it actually increases that by $890. It also requires districts to compress or to lower their tax rate. And it's, technically speaking, it's the portion of the tax rate that is what they call Tier 1. It's the tier that represents the basic cost of education, and it's one of the wealth thresholds for recapture. So districts are required to lower that portion of the tax rate by four cents. For the vast majority of districts, that rate is already at $1. And so lowering it four more pennies makes that portion of the tax rate 96 cents. And so that is the case with us. Our compressed rate today is $1. We'll lower it by four cents if this passes, and so our new compressed rate for Tier 1 is 96 cents. The bill also modifies the Tier 2 portion, the funding formulas, and that's the enrichment portion of the funding formulas. It changes the guaranteed yields on the pennies of tax above that compressed rate. So today, we tax at $1, and is our compressed rate, then we tax four cents above that. So our total M&amp;O tax rate is $1.4. Those four pennies above $1 are subject to enrichment funding through Tier 2. And so similarly, with, if this bill were to pass, districts will lower that Tier 1 portion of their tax rate, so from $1 to 96 cents. And then you are permitted to continue to tax, if you already are taxing above that today, those additional pennies. And so, again, in our case, that's four more pennies, so our total tax rate would be $1, you know, if we stopped there. And those additional four pennies are considered golden pennies, and they are equalized at a higher wealth level. And so this particular version of the bill takes those pennies, those golden pennies, and it actually changes the guaranteed yield on them. It lowers that just a bit, the guaranteed yield. For the pennies above that, then it actually raises that guaranteed yield dramatically. So this is something that is, this particular area is one that districts have looked at very closely because of what we will be required to do in terms of tax compression going forward as property values rise and as the legislature potentially changes the basic allotment. We may have to take additional action to compress or lower our tax rates in future years. But we will all still have access to a tax rate up to $1.17. That is today, the constitutional limit for the M&amp;O tax rate. And so one of the things that they very specifically say in this bill is that districts can continue to tax up to $1.17, but there are provisions in there that would require us to compress or lower potentially our tax rate each year going forward under certain circumstances. I will tell you that we spent a good bit of time even today on two different phone calls, different meetings about the school finance bill. And even the consultants who work with this every day out of Austin say that they still are struggling to understand all the technical aspects of the bill as it relates to compression and the rollback rate, which is the calculation that would say at a certain point, at what point a district is required to have a tax ratification election. And so there's a lot that still seems to, a lot of elements of the bill that seem to contradict each other. And the term we heard today was convoluted, because some of this portion of the bill references three different sets of laws, the Tax Code and different elements of the Texas Education Code. And so there are still, we think, some technical issues that they need to work out. Another area of House Bill 3 has to do with the dramatic change in the state comp ed funding. That funding comes to us today based on the count of students who are qualified for free reduced lunch, or if they're economically disadvantaged. And then those funds have to be used for serving only students who are at risk. And so one of the major changes in the school finance bill would entail changing the way those dollars are delivered to school districts. And instead of it being based on the count of students who are eligible for free reduced lunch, districts will be required to report to TEA information about the student's residence, every student's residence, where they live. And then the commissioner will assign a weight, a graduated rate, to students based on their census block. And the range of that weight is from 2.25 up to 2.275. And so the idea is to direct more dollars to districts and to individual schools that have greater concentrations of poverty. And so that's what this is intended to do. But again, it seems to be creating a system that will be hard for districts to obtain that data upfront and make our own estimates even on what that particular funding will look like.
Can I ask a quick question about that? So is that based on the last census? Because we're going through a census right now.
And I presume it will be the most current census data available. And I, so one piece I don't know is, you know, is that going to be the basis of this, these assignments, if you will, for 10 years? Or if there's going to be any mechanism to update that in between? But yes. There is included in the funding what they deem to be a reading allotment for students in grades kindergarten through 3. And the intent here is to help improve student reading at that third grade level, because that's seen as a very key gate, if you will, for determining whether students are on track to graduate. And seems to be the point at which, you know, you can have the greatest impact on a student's overall academic achievement. And so funding would come to districts, or based on their count of students in grades kindergarten through 3, who are either English language learners or who are economically disadvantaged. And then those funds can be used on all students from grades pre-K through 3. And the idea is that this funding should be enough to cover the cost of full-day pre-K for a district. Another thing that's in the bill is a mandate that full-day pre-K be in place for all districts this fall, starting September 1. There is a provision that allows districts to request a waiver from the full-day process under certain conditions. Right now, the way it's written, it would be if you don't have adequate space to switch to full-day pre-K, you can get a waiver. Or if implementing full-day pre-K would result in fewer students actually being served. And again, likely a space limitation. So there's still a lot of question around this even. And there's a lot, I think, still to be worked out on this. One of the things that is interesting, that we've actually pressed for, for a number of sessions, is extending the weighted funding for career tech down into the junior high level. And this bill would do that. It would actually extend the career tech weighted funding down to 6th grade and include the tech apps course even. And then a new dyslexia allotment with a small weight of .1 against the basic allotment. That's something new. The bill, as we have widely expected for quite some time, eliminates several existing elements of the formula, including the Cost of Education Index, which was a major factor that for years has been used to recognize the difference in cost from one region of the state to another. And this has been a real sore spot for many years with educators, because it has never been updated since the early 90s. And so this, and there's always been a great deal of question about how to best go about updating it. And so they finally determined that, you know, something that's that complicated and that can't be readily updated probably doesn't need to be here. So they've taken the dollars that they were using for that Cost of Education Index, and instead, they've rolled that money into the basic allotment. So that's part of where that higher basic allotment is coming from. The bill also eliminates gifted and talented allotment and the high school allotment. It doesn't eliminate the gifted and talented program. As a matter of fact, there's a new provision that would be added to the Education Code through this bill that requires districts to certify to TEA that you've got the gifted and talented program. And if you cannot certify that, then they, TEA will reduce your funding by an amount that really represents the gifted and talented funding we get today. The reason they did this is because the gifted and talented funding today is capped at 5% of a district's average daily attendance. And most districts serve well over 5% of their students in gifted and talented. So the thought was that, let's put this money into the basic allotment, and since that's the core element of all the other funding formulas that do get weights attached to them, that helps drive some additional funding to districts and to do that in a manner where it's more impactful, and again, the program requirements still remain. Similar thing with the high school allotment. They, instead of having money carved out specifically to serve kids who are in grades 9 through 12, they just take that money and roll it into the basic allotment and give districts more flexibility with it. And it helps it be a little more impactful, because other weights get attached to that basic allotment. The bill provides for tax relief by requiring tax compression. We talked about that a minute ago. We're all going to be, if this passes, required to compress our tax rate by four cents in the first year, with the state making up the money that we would lose on taxes on those four pennies by infusing more money into the state funding formulas. The rollback rate, this is where there's a lot of question at the moment about... The rollback rate, this is where there's a lot of question at the moment about, you know, how that calculation should work. Our understanding is that, and I think actually we've heard even this afternoon, that this interpretation that we received from one organization is not entirely correct. But the rollback rate, which would be the threshold at which we would be required to call a T R E, would be that new lower tier tier one rate, which is the the where we've lowered the one dollar down to ninety six cents, plus the four cents that we already tax above that. And then anything over that amount, we would be required to to have a T R E for. Some of the literature we got even yesterday indicated that there might be an opportunity to set that rate one penny higher before it triggers a T R E. But we've been told today that, no, that that was wrong. So even this needs to be updated to correct that. There is, it seems to be still a question about the equity of the new plan because it does still appear that property wealthy districts will have access to more revenue on that those tier two pennies, those golden pennies that are equalized at a higher level than tier one funding. And so it will be interesting to see how that plays out in the coming weeks. The Senate also supposedly has a school finance plan. They filed a bill on March eighth, but it's simply a shell. There are really no details in there of specific funding elements. And the intent all along from Senator Taylor, who is the author of that bill and who is the chair of the Senate Ed Committee, has been that they would put the details into the bill when that that bill comes before the Senate Ed Committee. In terms of property taxes, again, there's House Bill Two and Senate Bill Two that are identical bills that would, again, re-deliver some property tax relief. Those will work hand in hand as we move forward with the school finance legislation. There had been question about how they were really going to accomplish lowering tax rates or providing relief to taxpayers. And so we're starting to see some of those mechanics come out in House Bill Three and later in Senate Bill Four, the two actual finance bills. And so most of what we've done and seen in the last week or so has been around the school finance area. And this next week, it seems that we'll be spending a lot of time on on security issues. So that will answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. There's a lot of information here. It is amazing the level of detail. Thank you for taking the time to go through it and how much it has shifted in just a short time since we last met and even having interim discussions since we last met, how much it's moved. We do have a couple of trustees that have questions or comments. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Raich. And thank you, Ms. Powell, and all staff and my fellow colleagues and all of my colleagues who serve on the Governance Committee as we're constantly reviewing these bills. And Ms. Powell, I was looking at the same list of what bills came out for the committee, Public Ed Committee on Tuesday. And it is, as Ms. Powell said, it's almost all based around student safety, mental health, training, suicide prevention, bullying programs that the looking for. And this is pretty consistent with Public Ed Chairman Huberty trying to bundle bills together and make sure everyone's looking at items together that's in there. It also includes some board training. This is the part of the session, and we we've all been constantly talking about this. We know every other year, in the odd years, we start focusing. We work really hard on this. Be patient, but also be very diligent, I think, is the best terminology for right now. There's lots of bills that come out. Doesn't mean they're going to fly out, but we've had these coming out. Ms. Powell, one thing that on the Committee Substitute HB Three, as you mentioned, T R E election, things of that, it does ask, have y'all had any insight from all your connections? Because it does say you have to do an efficiency study. I get nervous anytime the state tells you to do a study because we all know that can be a lot of unintended consequences, cost, everything on there. What has been the feedback from the your your brain trust of colleagues around the state as to what what they think an efficiency study could be?
So, A.
Which I think we do efficiency studies every day in this district, but I'd like to see what they interpret that as.
And and to that point, this was something added in the Committee Substitute that was presented Tuesday of this week. And so it's new. And in one of the calls that we were on today with that Commit Education hosted, Todd Williams, no one seemed to know where that came from. And in also talking with our legislative consultant, there's really no details yet around that. I expressed some concern over that. And one of the comments that came back was, well, you know, if if that were to make it into a final bill, then that would be referred to T E A for rulemaking. And so it's not something that would be in place or could even be in place immediately, say, September one. So there's still a lot of question about that and where that even came from. So we don't have any any details other than just that, an efficiency study, before you could have a T R E.
Yeah. Yeah. Ms. Walton said, I'd love to see the Texas House do an efficiency study on themselves, the legislature. Sorry, I probably went as low as rep. I love it. I love.
It was a mutter under my head.
Sorry, yeah. It was a good mutter, Ms. Ms. Walton. I gotta get you to be a little more controversial like me up here sometimes. I get fired up when the house is going. They did on that bill. And and this is, we all know, there's still a lot of difference between the Senate and the House Committee. So there's still a lot of negotiation, but staying diligent with ourselves, connecting with our representatives, and then also with our contacts in Austin, which are getting these questions every single day are critical. I know a lot of teachers had questions about the merit pay system that was proposed and that was pulled out. But there was funding put in, which is people agree with, of some additional funding for teachers being in high need schools and some of that basis. So I think it was a a good compromise on some of the pieces that are added. I commend our Dr. Kavassos and our staff for driving transparency bills that we're working on with Representative Turner, who, in our great fortune, happens to be the chair of the Higher Ed Committee. So it's a huge benefit for us and our staff. I know we thought it'd be this next Tuesday, but we're thinking the next for one that we're working very diligently on to allow our staff and our, all of our staff and teachers all to be, allow us out of the TRS Active Care Bill, which we think will be a great benefit to teacher insurance and staff insurance as a whole as we work towards that. So it, we're, I know, highly anticipating seeing if it'd be on this week's bill, but anticipate possibly the next Tuesday's bill. So thank you, Ms. Powell and staff.
And I I did really, if I could insert one thing, I think I blew through the line item on one of the early slides on school finance, that the first estimate that we've seen really from legislative consultants is regarding the the financial impact to us of that bill, if it were to pass exactly as it's written today, is an additional thirty five million dollars. Now, I, you know, I don't expect it to be thirty five million dollars when we end. But that's, that's the way it sits today. And another thing that they've noted, they, the consultants, have been that they could only make the estimate for next year. They typically give estimates for at least two-year period. There are so many things that are unclear and unknown yet about the tax compression and the rollback rates and things like that in those subsequent years that they said they couldn't even make a stab at that beyond year one.
Yeah. Thank you for that extra bit of information. Yeah, we're, we're all eagerly anticipating what what the runs are going to look like and when they're going to be able to actually perform those runs. Who knows? There, it seems the more that this onion gets layered open, the more there's little rabbit holes of, well, maybe this costs this and this costs this and this contradicts with this, et cetera. So, yeah, we're still early in the process. It's still all overall wonderful that there is so much attention on on this and that we will surely see something positive moving forward. Might not be our ideal, but it's going to be pretty good. But we'll see. So thank you. Ms. Mays, go right ahead.
Thank you, President Raich. Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Now, I know things are going to continue to probably change, but in Senate Bill Five Hundred, excuse me, for the school safety and mental health, have you heard kind of some of the thoughts of the hundred million dollars for school security? If it's going to be equipment, a combination of counselors, social and emotional assistance? Is it going to be accommodation of these things? Have we heard kind of the nature?
In short answers, I don't have those details. I looked back at the bill the other day, and it was step simply stated as the dollar amount that would be allocated to T E A for that that broad category. So I don't know if it's going to be an allotment out to every district or if it is more of a grants-based application. A hundred million dollars frankly will not go very far.
Right.
Across a thousand school districts. So that remains to be seen.
Okay.
And again, I'll point out that is just the supplemental appropriations bill to finish out this current biennium. So, you know, we do expect that there will be security funding coming in the budget for the next biennium.
Okay. Now, hopefully this isn't a fairy dust request, but for the school finance bill, is there any way that maybe we could, for the way it's posed now, see a graph that would show if our district were to do the max up to a dollar seventeen, what kind of yield we'd get after our six pennies for the decrease of the compression of the six pennies and then the higher yield for the copper? Is there any way that we could see a graph that would kind of show? Because I'm assuming at some point you kind of break even and then eventually?
Yeah. So we can work at that with our consultants. Part of our challenge at the moment is we all use these templates that are are published by T E A and by Region Thirteen to run all of our state funding models. Well, today, they're all based on current law. And the intricacies are such that we can't just begin to go in and modify them ourselves. And so what we see right now are just these totals that we get from, yeah, from the consultants that say, here's, here's what you would have received under current law, total amount. Here's what you would receive under new law, total amounts, and the difference. We can certainly work with them and ask if they can help us model that. I would expect that's something that they they can help us with.
Yes, Ms. Mays, go ahead.
Yes.
And Ms. Mays, I would.
You turned on Polly's.
Oh.
It lied.
There it is. And Ms. Mays, I, I know that's a lot for Ms. Powell and them to do. So I would say, I think that's important. Can we say, hold off till we get maybe a joint committee? Because then they'll be able to start doing more runs. And I think some of the complications in there, for example, transportation funding, they added another piece in there about homeless students, extra transportation funding. They added another piece in there about potentially CTE students going to work sites. So they've definitely complicated and
Yeah.
made the runs very difficult. I will say, on almost all those runs, and and Chairman Huberty is very careful about saying, don't just look at the runs. And he, he likes to that. He goes, not everyone is going to benefit. I think of the eleven hundred school districts, all but sixty-three are actually seeing some type of increase on these runs from where they're looking for. Because unfortunately, legislatures, first thing to do when any bill comes out is look at where the runs and what my district's doing overall. But Chairman Huberty is trying to take a really large picture, look and say, what's the right school finance program for all of Texas as a whole? So I would just, I think it's good. And if I can ask potentially to save Ms. Powell, because they'll do everything and work through anything, yeah, ask if we can wait just a tad to get that type of document out to them. Because I don't know if we can fully produce it just yet.
Absolutely. And then I had another question for the mandate for the full pre K. Is that funded?
So the way, the way it it will be funded is through what is called an early literacy allotment.
Through the allotment, okay.
And so the allotment, it's kind of like what we have today with state comp ed, where we get our money based on the number of kids who are eligible for free or reduced lunches. But we actually spend the dollars on at-risk kids. So in this particular case, the funding for this early ed allotment will come to us as based on a weight attached to each student who is an English language learner in grades kindergarten through three. There's a point one weight times the new basic allotment, times the average daily attendance of those kids. Or a student who is economically disadvantaged. If you're both, then you count twice in that for the the funding purpose. That bucket of money then is, can be used for any purpose a district wants from, for kids grade pre K through three. The intention is that that money should be, should be sufficient for a district to implement full day pre K. The average daily attendance funding that we get for pre K students will continue to be paced on a half-day calculation, which seems a little counterintuitive.
Right.
But that's the way it's, it's written in the bill at the moment. And part of what they were trying to do was give some districts flexibility. Some districts have already, a number of districts have already implemented full day pre K. And so this provision would allow them to use those funds for full day pre K to help with that. And then also free up maybe some existing funds to be used on something else. So they were trying to give districts flexibility in how you use that money. But it's, it's not going to be quite like just what we would have expected, which would have been a pre K allotment.
Right.
Or a just funding attendance for students as a full day instead of the half that they count right now for funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Raich. Ms. Powell, as always, I appreciate the due diligence that you put into your presentations, especially as it deals with what is a ever-moving piece of iceberg, I think, right now, just going back and forth. And Mr. Hogg, your committee, the work, the time that's put into it is, has been tremendous. And along with the superintendent, Arlington has been probably one of the most influential districts as far as putting forth the legislative agenda, bringing in all of our local representative, representatives with sit-down meetings, and then also having made at least three trips down to Austin. When I was down just a few weeks ago with a few different colleagues, I I've got to tell you, I was, I was quite amazed and quite, I don't, I want to say, I took great pride in our district and in this board because the representatives in Austin that serve our district have listened to the proposals that we brought forward. Many of the concerns that we've had, they've, they've written specific bills that that deal with the things that we have seen. And, you know, so we beat up Austin a lot. So I would, I would actually like to say that I'm seeing more compromise taking place in Austin in this legislative, legislative timeframe than I have during the course of nine years that I've been on this board. So with that, would like to acknowledge that it, that Austin seems to really understand that education needs to be on the forefront. But once again, I want to just tell each and every one of my colleagues and the, you, the administrators, you, the administration, how thankful we are as a community to have the service that you're putting forward to move a piece of the educational puzzle that you really don't think that you necessarily needed to have a hand in. But it just shows your compassion and passion for educating our our children. So with that, I appreciate that. And that's, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. And you're certainly included in that as well. We can't exclude yourself. Ms. Walton?
Just to add something to what Mr. Hibbs said as far as thanking all of us that have been working on this most recently to educate been working on this, most recently to educate our legislators and their staff, that's been very worthwhile, and thank you, Ms. Powell, for helping so much with that. But I will also say to teachers and all other of our employees, we are very thankful for our group here in Arlington because they vote, and our legislators know that. And that really helps us when we go to Austin and talk to legislators. Our teachers and other employees are educated about the issues, and that's important, and I hope they will continue to do that.
Well said. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Are there any other trustees that have questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll close with, look forward to what's coming in the recent weeks ahead, what gets placed on committee hearings and schedules, and hopefully voted out to get the full floor purview, and hopefully enough details where we can actually have some runs and stability of what this looks like going forward. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. All right. We now move to the open forum for non-agenda items discussion. And we do have, I have three cards this evening, so I'd like to just read a little bit of foundation, ground rules, if you will. This second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. As I said, I have three cards from our audience. When your name is called, please step up to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. There's a yellow light that will illuminate when there's one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation at that time. So the first card I have tonight is Mr. Kurt Knopton, or Knopton, to discuss social, emotional, P B I S, and bully prevention. And is it Knopton or Knopton?
It's neither, it's Napton.
Napton. Boy, I blew that one.
Great chance.
Touche. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Rush, and Dr. Kavassos, and board members, and this opportunity to speak in open forum. I'm a thirty-year Arlington resident. My wife, who's here with me, taught at Ellis Elementary School, fourth grade. My daughter is a first-year teacher at Lynn Hale Elementary School, and both of my kids went K through twelve through A I S D. And so what I wanted to raise awareness or talk about this evening, and perhaps it's better to say reinforce awareness amongst the board and the administrators, is about a national public health issue that we're not immune to here in Arlington, which is bullying, in particular twenty-first century bullying, I would say. And if you just stop a minute and think about, you know, your memories when you were young, like me, you can probably have seared in your memory a moment when you were bullied or witnessed some bullying, and kind of where you were, who it was, how it made you feel, and kind of the serious nature. And many of us move on from that, but many don't. And there's a lot of social problems that are getting more and more serious, especially when the stakes are raised with online bullying, where children in our district feel like these things don't go away because they're permanently marked on the internet and the online record. And some of the statistics are quite alarming. The fear of bullying in America, a hundred and sixty thousand students in the U.S. skip school daily because of bullying, that's half of one percent. In the realm of suicide, unfortunately, children ages ten to fourteen, suicide is the second-leading cause of death amongst that group. When we heard about Senate Bill five hundred, school safety and mental health, two thousand eighteen reports show that there's an increase in the number of school shootings, and studies in the past have seen in the nineteen nineties, twelve out of fifteen of the shooters in the schools had experienced bullying. It affects one out of three children. And in the mental health realm, which has been talked about, there's been shown a direct link by the NIH in anxiety, depression, and an increase in mental health problems as a direct result of bullying. It affects special needs kids. It's a, it's just, it's a big problem. And what I wanted to respectfully request is perhaps that the board and the administrators could look at whether it's time to put in place a comprehensive, proactive, evidence-based, anti-bullying program across the districts, especially looking at the elementary schools where I think we can make the most difference. And I'm very positive to see a lot of emphasis and investment in social, emotional learning in the district, and the kind of positive behavior investments in P B I S. And I understand from research I've done that there are programs that are turnkey, that support S E L and Castle and P B I S, that can be put to work directly to support our kids. I'll finish with this. I remember being an elementary school student growing up in the public schools in Herschelis, Bedford, and I remember something that came on the intercom once a week, and that was Zig Ziglar. And he had this thing where he would talk and about positive messages, and at the end he'd say, "I'll see you at the top." It stuck with me, and it motivated me. I don't know how much positive messaging is happening. We have multimedia. We have a lot better than an announcement coming on. We can show multimedia. I believe that culture is driven by the content that our children see every day, especially on a repetitive basis. And I believe that conduct is a direct result of the culture that they're experiencing in the schools. I'm seeing new things that my daughter is experiencing in the elementary schools in the same district that my wife did not experience early in our marriage and her career. And so I am concerned. I'd like to see if there's approval, support, funding, more that can be done in our district when it comes to bullying, and really taking a look at the best programs out there and putting those into the consideration set. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your words and taking the time to come down and express that to us.
Thank you. Appreciate your service and leadership.
Thank you. The second card I have this evening is Cindy Calaluka. And the representing K through two teachers at Dunn Elementary School discussing curriculum and report cards.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Calaluka. How are you?
Thank you. I'm doing very well this evening.
Good.
And I hope all of you are as well. President Rush, Dr. Kavassos, and school board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Cindy Calaluka. I teach first grade at Dunn Elementary. And first of all, I want to tell you how pleased I am with the goals you've set for us to be a premier school district. The new facilities and the programs and opportunities that are afforded our students are truly wonderful. Our mission, to empower and engage all students to be contributing responsible citizens, striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences, is spot-on. That is exactly what education should be doing. Secondly, I need to say that while we have these sound goals, our approach to achieving these goals is leading us in the wrong direction. I've been teaching in this great district of ours for thirty years, and we've dealt with many issues in that time. One of the issues that seems to be driving us currently is that the United States is falling behind other countries in education. The fact that we educate every child, not just those with academic promise, is one of many factors that contribute to this perception. I've watched as curriculum that is not developmentally appropriate has been pushed down onto lower grades in order to try to help us catch up. I'm seeing my first graders cry out in frustration. "I can't do this. I'm stupid, and it breaks my heart." I waited with great anticipation for our new report cards and curriculum documents this year. The old report cards were very time-consuming, and the curriculum documents were so full of options that it actually made them overwhelming and very difficult to use. I can't tell you what it did to my spirit when we looked over our new report cards and our curriculum and found that they were much more complex than the old ones. The wording on the report cards is difficult to interpret for parents and even for teachers. For example, on the first-grade report card, "In Language Arts, Subheading Literary Elements", it says, "recognizes and analyzes literary elements within and across increasingly complex, traditional, contemporary, classical, and diverse literary texts." On the first-grade report card, "In Math, the subheading Geometry and Measurement" says, "applies mathematical process standards to analyze attributes of two-dimensional shapes and three-dimensional solids to develop generalizations about their properties." At the beginning of the year, when I read these to my son, he said they sounded more like objectives for his college courses than for first graders. In addition to these lengthy statements and complex, on the report card, there are between five and fifteen separate lines of similar complexity that the teacher needs to check in order to grade that one standard. This adds up to five pages of checklists for one student just in Language Arts. If I were able to split myself in half and leave one of me at my horseshoe table doing nothing but assessing these checklists, I might be able to do it in the reporting period, maybe. We're struggling just to introduce all of these concepts on the checklists, and the students are struggling because they do not have the time they need to practice and internalize these concepts. I feel like I'm just crop dusting. The grading scale... Is that twenty-two seconds left?
You're good.
Okay. I've got a minute and a half. The grading scale for mastery, approaching, A for approaching mastery, and beginning progress, a B for beginning progress, adds to the confusion. I had a first-grade parent tell me his daughter cried when she saw all the Bs on her report Can I do my conclusion?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. We need to be building a solid foundation for these, for the learning in the early grades. Young children learn through play and concrete experiences. They need to have a relationship with their teacher in order to feel comfortable enough to take risks and learn new things. They need time to practice and internalize the things that they learn before they move on to new concepts. If we're truly committed to our goal of empowering and engaging all students to be contributing responsible citizens, striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences, we need to stop pushing the curriculum down, focus on developmentally appropriate practices, and build a growth mindset during the early years of education. If we do this, there's no limit to what our students will build on their solid foundations. Thank you so much, especially for the extra time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all the cards we have. The third card I have is Ms. Sheri Wade, speaking on tardy policy and exemptions.
I have to admit, don't start my time yet.
For those that don't know, she used to sit here.
Coming back in here tonight was kind of like going to my grandma's house. You know, it kind of smells the same and feels the same. And it's comfortable, but I like sitting back there playing mahjong while you guys are... So, okay, you ready? Okay. All right. And by the way, I wrote all this down because you know I'm verbose, so if I don't look at you, it's not that I don't love you. Okay? And I'm here with my principal's permission. Okay. Good evening, President Rush, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos. My name is Sheri Wade, and I'm the English Department Chair at Sam Houston High School. Actually, I don't teach English. I get to teach amazing, diverse, funny, sometimes very awkward, sometimes smelly teenagers, and that's why I love my job at Sam. I want to share information with the board about the A I S D high school tardy policy or lack thereof. After purposefully speaking with teachers at each of the other high schools, I can tell you that tardies are one of the biggest issues for teachers. A fair amount of our high school students, not all, have figured out a way to be counted present and get their mandated attendance credit for class when in reality, they're spending class time at the donut shop, or seven-eleven, getting hot cheetos, or somehow moving about the hallways with Harry Potter's invisibility cloak, and they're not caught. Here's the scenario. I have a young man named Marcelo, who's a sweet student, very bright, promising future. He wants to do well because he wants to make his mom proud. At the beginning of the school year, he's on time for all his classes, very engaged and very successful. But he notices that some of his buddies walk into class late every day, ten minutes, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, and yes, as the year goes along, students arrive for a ninety-minute class eighty minutes late. And now he's thinking that since all of his buddies get away with this, and there are no real consequences, he might as well join them. There goes another student. It is the job of the teenager to push boundaries, we know this, but teachers need the ability to pull them back for their educational benefit. Now let's switch to Mrs. Wade's desk. She's wonderful. She greets her students at the door, checks on the ones that seem down, and that happens a lot, and high-fives the students who have giant smiles on their faces. She gets them started on their work and takes roll. If a student is present in class on time, then she doesn't do anything in team's attendance. However, if a student is not present in their seat, she marks an A for absent. She completes her attendance and begins the process of molding those precious minds in her room. Ten minutes into the class period, a student walks in, sometimes loudly, sometimes quietly, sneaking very well. Mrs. Wade, in the middle of instruction, it's easy for all people to forget where they were, she smiles usually and gestures for them to take their seat, and she tries to stay on track with the twenty-five students who arrived on time. Five minutes later, another student or two meander into the classroom. Students will actually walk into class at some of our high schools after sixty to eighty minutes. They're gone, and they know there's no issue because there's no consequence for tardies. Teachers have to go back and change that A for absent to T for tardy. They're not counted absent. They do not have to make up those minutes like they would if they were counted absent. We added ten minutes to our class days because the state counts the number of minutes now that our students are supposed to be in class. I teach English, and y'all know me well enough to know I know enough math to know that if a child is in class thirty minutes during his four class periods a day, he's getting two hours of education when it should have been six. He's still not counted absent. On top of that, it's up to the teachers to make sure that that student gets caught up on what he missed, because we are held responsible for what they learn and how they do on the infamous state tests. The A I S D wants all of our high school students to graduate college, career, and military-ready. I have not in my fifty-five years of life ever heard of a job or organization where it's okay to occasionally or consistently be late or miss that much time, and the individual still gets paid and reaps the benefits of their organization's work. We cannot say something like college, career, and military-ready and then not hold them responsible and demonstrate what that looks like. On behalf of an overwhelming number of high school teachers, I'm asking that the Board of Trustees research through Dr. Kavassos and his staff and implement a tardy policy that has some strength behind it to support the teachers and assure every opportunity for our students to get what they deserve. There used to be a code, T D five, but I believe most teachers would be thrilled if it was a T D fifteen, which means that they're absent after fifteen minutes. I met with my amazing principal, Mr. Benavides, who literally, physically, emotionally is behind me, and Dr. Horton this morning, and after talking with her about the exemption issue, she decided to form a committee of six- issue, she decided to form a committee of six high school teachers to get input on the exemption situation. So I'm sure that that will take place and end up on your table in a few months. Teachers feel like a tardy penalty could be just one way to hold students responsible to improve their attendance. She assured us there is time to meet over the next couple of months, and will make its way to y'all for action. I'm almost there. I've truly enjoyed being back home and teaching in AISD after spending nine years as a school board member in this district. I often tell teachers who have concerns about the way things are done that they need to let those who represent us know how they feel. I assured them if our school board members knew we had an issue and they had the power to fix it for us, that they would take action, as long it is educationally sound, legally available, and financially feasible. I know each of you, and I know that you will step up to work through Dr. Cavassos and his staff to fix an issue that will benefit everyone involved. Holding students responsible won't cost the district any money, but not holding them responsible for missing precious minutes in the classroom may cost them in their future. I know you cannot respond to me during this meeting, but you all know where to find me, 2000 Sam Houston High School Drive, Room 416. You are all welcome to visit because, as we say in the halls of Sam Houston High School, there are no strangers. Truly, truly, thank you for your time and your service. I admire what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wade. Appreciate that. Very good. All right. Moving on, our next section on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to share some information about our district. First, during the month of February, our schools had enrichment lessons and discussions surrounding Black History Month. Jones Academy had a performance of African folklore, and Dunn Elementary students watched African drum and dance ensemble. So, so many celebrations. I thought we'd take just a moment to reflect on February and all the celebrations that our campuses did. Next, a kindness initiative continues throughout our district. In February, Nichols Junior High, Webb Elementary, both had kindness assemblies with students receiving prizes for their acts of kindness from the city of Arlington. I'd like to thank the mayor of Arlington, Jeff Williams, and the entire staff there for this initiative and recognizing our students as they are kind in our campuses. The Martin High School Symphony Orchestra performed a full honor orchestra during the Annual Texas Music Educator Association Conference in San Antonio. Quite an honor that this is not new to them. They are repeatedly invited back to TMEA, which is outstanding. Also, Young Junior High Concert, they performed at the American Choral Directors Association Convention in Kansas City, and I want to congratulate them for their outstanding performance. Many of us got to see them as well, so congratulations to these students. I were able to show some extra appreciation for some employees February 14th by honoring the teachers and department, Department Employee of the Month. Congratulations to Paula Kilgore from Little Elementary, Crystal Beatty from Turning Point Secondary, Amy Wood from the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center, and Sauna Mosry from the Food and Nutrition Services at Dunn Elementary. We sincerely appreciate their efforts, and they represent our employees really exceptionally well. In late February, we had more than 450 leaders from across our district come together at Sam Houston High School, so you see some pictures there, for our Leadership Collaborative. And I'm proud of this work. This includes teachers, principals, leadership teams from schools, from different departments across our district, to continue our leadership definition and continue the attributes of leadership and the training that goes along with that, as well as the dissemination of that information. So thank you to all the staff that put that together. It was a very good experience for, for everyone. Friday night, recently, we had the honor of recognizing our Teachers of the Year for the Masonic Lodge Excellence Ceremony that occurred there. Congratulations to Ms. Durden from Short Elementary, Ms. Mandrell from Sterrett, Callahan from Butler Elementary, Ms. Malone from Miller Elementary, and Ms. Stevenson from Hale, and Ms. Hader from Ashworth Elementary. Congratulations to these teachers, and a special thank you to our Masonic Lodge Club members that are outstanding, and they are so appreciative of our teachers and so supportive of our school district. So thank you to them for assembling these, these gifts and prizes for our teachers. Monday, I had the privilege to speak to some students at Swift Elementary. These are 5th and 6th grade boys who are part of a launch program that teaches them life skills. The topic was accepting criticism. And while we have a lot of experience, I have certain experience with accepting criticism from a large number of people. So we shared good, good experiences. They, they learned a lot and, and really very engaged. And we did some role-playing on how to appropriately accept criticism and feedback and, and how that feels, and how you can get over the feeling and all this kind of stuff. So it worked really well, and I'm just really proud of the Swift Elementary students. Tuesday night, our Capital Needs Steering Committee met and continued discussions about district's need, needs and potential bond TRE later this year. I want to thank again the Capital Needs Steering Committee. They also heard from our FFC chair as well that night, but I want to thank them. We shared with them the very first evening that Mr. Hibbs also presented that first evening with the Capital Needs Committee, and we shared with them that we're going to thank them in advance because of their work and the work that they have to do. So here's kind of the midway thank you again, because they're spending a lot of time with us and assessing our needs and developing options and being in the community and things, and things like that. So Capital Needs Steering Committee, continue the great work, and thank you for, for that dedication. Finally, a few things to, to mention as reminders. Our transfer window opens, special transfer window opens Tuesday, March 26th, and closes Friday, April 5th. We encourage all parents to complete the Parent Satisfaction Survey that's due March 29th. Lot of information on that. Our teacher job pairs from 9 to 1 on Saturday, March 30th at the Dan Diaper Career and Technical Center. And then our pre-kindre and kindre roundups are from April 1st through April 5th, and we encourage all of our stakeholders to be engaged with these events as appropriate. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Lots of great things going on in the district, lots of great activities and events coming up in the near future. I appreciate you sharing that. Have no idea what you're talking about in receiving criticism. No idea, but appreciated what you had to say anyway. Are there any trustees that have reports? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I just want to give a shout out to my fellow librarians out there. They will be doing the Battle of the Books this Saturday, the 23rd. 4th grade will start at 8:30, I believe, and then 5th grade will follow in a couple of hours. So good luck to everybody with Battle of the Books.
Wonderful. Very good. Any other trustees have reports this evening? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, President Reich.
Thank you. All right. The time is 8:46, and we will be going into closed session right now pursuant to sections 551.071 through, or 551.072 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, specifically over the items on the agenda, on the front end of the agenda. Thank you very much.